We will call tonight's July 24, 2018 meeting of the Noblesville Common Council to order. If you are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Taylor, would you lead us?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eyre.
President.
Mr. Boyce.
President.
Mr. Hampton.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Ms. Rowland.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to the approval of minutes from the July 10, 2018 meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Approval of tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
Mr. President.
That was one abstention.
I apologize. One abstention. Eight. Yeah, either one abstention. Thank you. Oh, let's. Sorry about that. Approval of the agenda?
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we amend the agenda and move Ms. Linus, item number one, to right under the approval of the claims.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those of that, all those in favor? Nine to zero. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Nine to zero. Thank you very much. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present? I didn't have any cards, but if you would like to speak, there are cards just outside the door there, and please hand them to the clerk. He'll be happy to allow you to speak at tonight's meeting. Next up, Mayor's Report to Council. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. It's the mayor's birthday today, so I have filled in for him at the last minute so he can celebrate his day. It's been a very exciting last couple of weeks, almost too much to sort of go over in this time period, so I'm going to keep it very brief because we've got a special presentation from Noblesville Main Street. But I did want to thank everyone for coming out to the mayor's charity jubilee. We had 300 attendees at the new Embassy Suites and Conference Center, and we were raising money for Noblesville Youth Assistance, Trinity Free Clinic, Boys and Girls Club of Noblesville, and the Noblesville Fire Department Food and Toy Drive. So, very successful event. We also had the Noblesville Main Street Street Dance, which I won't steal Lorna's thunder on that. I'll let her go over that event, but another successful street dance this year. And we also had a news conference, of course, on July 18th. Thank you for those who could attend to announce the Noblesville Now Capital Improvement Plan. And upcoming, we've got a chamber luncheon tomorrow, and then we'll be kicking off our budget meetings with council on July 31st. And last but not least, on August 2nd, we have the Marching Millers Band Day at the high school, so come on out that evening to support our marching miller's band. Without further ado, I'd like to invite up Lorna Steele from Noblesville Main Street, who's going to give a little presentation about the organization. Ms. Steele?
Yeah.
Welcome, Lorna.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. As Steve said, my name's Lorna. I am the new Executive Director of Noblesville Main Street, and thanks for having me tonight. I'm super excited to get to tell you a little bit about Main Street, who we are, what we're doing, where we're going, and why we matter. So, without further ado, we will kick this off. First of all, who are we? For those of you who maybe don't know, I've kind of found that Noblesville Main Street isn't this widely-known, widely-understood organization and aren't a community, and that's definitely a goal of mine to kind of improve. So, just to touch on a few things, we are nationally accredited. We are a 501(c)(3) through Main Streets of America, and the Main Street of America program exists to really revitalize older historic commercial districts and to build vibrant neighborhoods and thriving economies. From Noblesville Main Street and the Main Streets overall, there's kind of separated into four different categories. The first one we'll go over is the design, then there's organization, the promotion, and economic development. So, with the design aspect of Noblesville Main Street, they're really focused on enhancing the physical appearance of downtown, so they're, we're really supportive of new construction that is proposed, that enhances our downtown district. They're concerned with the overall look of downtown, and they work with all these elements to create a fun, a fun and friendly and vibrant atmosphere in our downtown businesses to attract new visitors and hopefully new business. Our next one is our, the Organization Committee, and their job is to really build an overall consensus and cooperation among various groups and partners in our community. So, they're, they rally a lot of support, both from the private and the public sector, to kind of create this overall, like, what's the word I'm looking for? So, I forgot it. It's fine. They rally support from both the private and the public sector, really to build, I, back to it, jeez Louise. Anyways, we create partnerships of local businesses and stakeholders, and really want to streamline our messaging, and they work on bigger-picture projects as a whole, so kind of like a top-down view of Main Street. Our next committee is our Promotions Committee. This one's kind of unique in the fact that it involves a lot of downtown business owners. They're focused a lot on the events that happen downtown. Their main goal is to make sure that downtown is this vibrant, fun, active place that everyone goes, and, yeah, that we always have businesses and that you, or, I mean, events, and that you can come down and always have something going on. Our last one is kind of our Economic Development Committee, kind of says, means what it says, but their, their overall goal is to strengthen the district, their existing economy base, and hopefully bring in new businesses and strengthen the ones that are here. An example of one project overarching that they kind of work on is, we're kind of looking at like how we make the upstairs of businesses more like ADA-friendly, so that some of the down, their downstairs businesses can move upstairs and make room for new vibrant, cool, fun shops on the first floor. So, fun projects like that. Next, what are we doing? What does Noblesville Main Street do? So, the street dance, the duck race, farmer's market, oh my, we have so many things going on, and this is the cutest dog that's at the farmer's market every week, and it has a flower on its head, so, I mean, I just had to show it. A few stats about our farmer's market. We have 4,000-plus visitors a week, which is huge. We have 90 vendors, and that's kind of maxed out for our space there at Federal Hill Commons, and we also have a waitlist a mile long. I have probably two calls a week of vendors asking to come get into our market, which is super cool. We activate the market on certain Saturdays with free yoga, tai chi, and on August 11th, we're going to have a kids' day, so we'll have kids' activities, and then we're also going to encourage kids to bring their business out to the market and sell their little things like slime or lemonade, and kind of create a cool atmosphere on August 11th. One cool quote that we recently got, this lady came up and she said, "You guys seriously have one of the best markets. There's so many produce vendors." And I was like, "Well, yeah, it's a farmer's market," but then she was saying, "No, like, we're surrounded by so many farmer's markets, but not all of them have the authenticity that ours does of local organic produce that you can go and get and different flowers." So, the farmer's market's something we're very proud of. Another, a few other things that we're doing, just a couple. The street dance just happened. It was a huge success. This is the touch-a-truck area, and this is a tiny car, so you can kind of see in the corner that guy's hand, so like, gives the picture a little perspective. This is Parker Morgan's brought this out. It was a huge hit. A few stats on the street dance. We had 15, around 15,000 people that were there. We had 54 vendors, 16 food vendors. We closed three sides of the square. We had two princesses and one tiny vintage beetle. Another thing that we are currently gearing up for is the duck race. We're kind of looking to revamp that, activate the river a little more, especially with the White River Vision Team and that kind of plan, looking into something, so keep an eye out for that. Also, if you haven't bought your duck race tickets yet, see one of my lovely board members. We can get you hooked up for that event. Another event that's been going on is our Meals from the Market, so those sunflowers in the top of the picture. This is a really cool project and something that we've seen huge growth in. It's a private chef, and he creates, he goes to the market the Saturday before, buys all the produce, and then creates and plates a meal and serves it to 50 of our closest friends, which is super cool. And it's been a huge success, and we really love it, because we're also working on this whole idea of alley activation. This is the South Alley that's been closed, but we're of, we have been actively working with the city departments and Nickelplate Arts to close the North Alley, and they have some really cool ideas about how to activate the alley with some cool art and some cool light installations, so we're really excited about that project as well. There's only like 5,000 more things we're doing, but they only gave me 10 minutes, so, just, and more. So, next, where are we going? Where are we headed? This year's kind of theme of Main Street is the power of small, which I think is really cool, spaced about how small businesses, small-scale development, and small steps are leading to really big things. I think this really identifies and is what Noblesville Main Street is about, because we're kind of a smaller community in the big scheme of things. So, a couple of new things that we're looking to kind of harness the power of small. We're looking to redo our branding initiative. Main Street has some really cool things like the townie and the hip historic, and we have the star brick, but they don't quite mesh together very well, so we're working with a local media and branding company to roll that out, so look, look for that in, in the fall. We also hope it will be a way to kind of brand our downtown as a whole, so getting all of our small businesses and things some more publicity, so that as the shopping season heads out, people will think to go downtown first, instead of maybe the big-box stores. The other things we're working on is, is, we want to enhance the culture surrounding Main Street and surrounding Noblesville. One of the things I hear from our, from residents all the time is, "Well, we love the small-town feel of Noblesville." And I'm like, "I love that, too." And so, we really want to enhance that culture. We want to make a culture of giving, a culture of, there's always something going downtown. It's vibrant, it's active. You go downtown, you just feel the energy, and we want people to come downtown and say, "I want to be a part of Noblesville, Main Street, and I want to be a part of Noblesville. How do I do that?" So, we're kind of working on, our branding initiative will, will help with that, and then just to like, work to enhance positive community engagement among our business owners and just our community overall. Another thing that we are working on, we're big with partnerships at Noblesville Main Street, and we've kind of identified this really cool potential partnership between the Noblesville Chamber, Nickelplate Arts, and Main Street. We kind of all just started being like, we're kind of all the same, and we wish we talked more. What does this look like? How can we work together better? So, we are starting conversations about what does it look like to create, to work together more closely. Another thing we hear from the community a lot is lack of communication, or "I didn't know what was going on," or "What's going on downtown?" And in 2018, that should never happen. So, we're like, how can we communicate with our residents and our businesses better and, and just more often? So, we're starting conversations about that, which I'm really excited about. Next, why does Noblesville Main Street matter? Like I said before, Noblesville is special, and so is Noblesville Main Street. And we are a small town, like I said before, but I think we can harness that to really have, be the best of both worlds. We're uniquely positioned to be a small town in a big city, which is something our local, our other local cities don't really have a lot of. Also, Main Street is also uniquely positioned to be this really cool in-between organization that links the local government to the local culture and community. And I truly think when that happens and it works together seamlessly, the possibilities are honestly endless. But unfortunately, money doesn't grow on trees. Here's my shameless pitch. At the core, we're a nonprofit, and we need financial backing to make a lot of our big dreams of being this hub of activity and culture and community a reality. And so, we certainly could not have achieved half of what we have in the 29 years, Noblesville Main Street's 29 years old, without you all. So, I first just want to thank you for your past support and your encouragement and everything, making Noblesville Main Street as strong as it is. We're one of the strongest and oldest ones in the state of Indiana, which I think says a lot, and the credit goes to most of you and your predecessors, so thank you for that. But our dreams are great, and the potential of downtown is even greater. But, so, it requires your, your, sorry, your continued and increased financial support, of course, but with Main Street as your downtown ambassador, together we can truly achieve greatness. That's all I have for you.
Want any questions for Lorna? I think I speak for all of us when I say we are constantly impressed with what Noblesville Main Street does, continue to make us look great, so thank you so much for all you do, and to your entire board, thank you for being here tonight. This is quite a show of force, so thank you so much for the support that you give Lorna and support you give our community as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Deputy Mayor? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Then we will move right along here to council committee reports. Mr. O'Connor, I know you got one.
Finance Committee met July 19th, and I'll be brief in my comments. The bulk of the meeting had to do with funding of major capital projects. We spoke with Mr. Howard at length about some of the limitations that we've got as a result of the state statutes that are in place regarding the amount of debt that can be taken on to fund certain projects. And so, I suppose to boil it down to Cliff Notes version, we're going to have to be judicious on how we utilize the leverage that we have within the confines of the statutory regulations that we've got to deal with. That being said, that doesn't mean we're not going to move forward with the projects. It just means we're going to have to be selective and decide which ones we want to do and when we do them. There's a variety of different things. I'm happy to share these minutes with you. You can pour over all those details at your leisure, but suffice to say that there's two or three different things that we have to grapple with with regard to financing and debt, most of which were put in place over the last decade that have made it a little more difficult, I think, for local government to actually do what it needs to do. So, I think there are some conversations afoot to try to see if we can't do some things regarding the statutes that are currently in place. For a growing community like Noblesville, some of these things are a little arcane, in my opinion, and need to be addressed, but nonetheless, you have to deal with what's in front of you now from a statutory perspective. So, there's reasons for some of those governors being in place. At the same time, it does restrict what you can do and how quickly you can do it, and sometimes it's not necessarily bad, because it does give you a chance to sit back and think about it. On the other hand, it does really restrict what you can do, just from a time perspective, and I think the citizens typically want to see things happening, and yet you do have some constraints that you have to deal with. So, we talked about the budget schedule. I think we're still on time. Mr. Spalding is working diligently to try to get some things prepared for us to review, but I think the process will be much similar to what we've done historically, had different department heads come in and tell us what their needs are, what their priorities are, and then we'll, we'll work through that and then come up with an overarching plan at the end. So, should see, should be very familiar to everybody. Nothing, let's see, trying to remember. And then there's a variety of different things that are on the agenda tonight, which we discussed in that meeting, so those come to you with a favorable recommendation along with the claims.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. O'Connor? Seeing none. Additional committee reports? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of claims, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Nine to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to miscellaneous number one, council to consider a development agreement with Promenade Apartments LLC. Mr. Howard, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. The agreement before you concerns a project that was initially approved in concept, I think in about 2008, and it was approved just in time for the recession to come and make it fall on its face. The original developers have moved on, Justice Development Company, and we'll have them come up in a little bit and introduce themselves and their plans for the area, has acquired this property. We had nothing but a CVS for a long time, and now the St. Vincent's Micro Hospital's coming along, and this project concerns the multifamily at the northwest corner of the project, which is shown on your map. This area has been zoned multifamily at this density for quite some time. The, it is, this is being built to the standards. The design of the building has been ARB. It's my understanding from planning, this project substantially exceeds the standards that were before ARB. This project came to your Economic Development Subcommittee. There was talk, the, the basic issue here is drainage. There was talk about a contribution to drainage. There was talk about making sure that the developer had substantial skin in the game before there were any assistance to the payments, and finally, that there be clawbacks in place. And I think this document is written, meets those goals. Essentially, in section two, there would be up to $750,000 reimbursement for drainage expenses, I believe, and it's my understanding, and they'll be up here in a minute for a presentation to correct me, but they're looking at at least a million and a half, maybe more than that, in drainage improvements. Under the terms of agreement in section two, before there was any payments in the city, they would prove investment of $500,000 in drainage, and after that, the city would participate 60% of the next million dollars for $600,000. And finally, in number C, once there was proof that there was enough assessed value to generate the first $200,000 of additional tax payments from this development alone, not the rest of the site, there would be another $150,000 payment. And the payments would be in the term, terms of a forgivable loan, essentially, unless they meet the benchmarks contained in section three and four of the agreement, that loan, part of that loan would have to be repaid. Under the terms of that, the obligation to pay a loan would be a lien against the real estate, subject only to the construction lien. Under the forgiveness, essentially, once they reach, they would have to reach $400,000 of a tax bill based on the January 1, 2020 assessment, which is essentially three years. We kind of forget about that lag time, but by the time, they will not have an assessment in January 1 of 19, so it would be January of '20 would be their first assessment, so '21 and then '22 would be the year. They had to be generating at least $400,000 tax bill, which basically would boil down bill, which basically would boil down to about $350,000 in tax increment that we would capture, so we would reimburse our incentive fund from the increment for the first $750,000. If they do not meet that, there's a formula in there that essentially would be pro rata, would be, the numerator would be whatever the assessment and tax payment in January of '22 would be, the denominator would be the 400,000, and then multiply that by what they'd received to date, and that would be the amount that they would have to repay. So I think this agreement meets the goals that I heard came from your Economic Development Subcommittee. Again, it is zoned. There is a lot of additional project here. It is basically senior living, and commercial would be the rest of it. The senior living, kind of in the lower right-hand corner, the outlots and commercial would be the rest of it. There is a piece of ground right in the middle there along Little Chicago Road that is the Hamilton County Public Library purchased years ago for an expansion. I don't know the status of that, but it hasn't happened in the last 12 years, and the developer may be ready to speak to that. Behind me is Mr. Walter Justice, Principal of Justice Companies, the developer of this project. We also have Chad Sweeney from Genovis, and I'm going to have them come forward to answer any questions you might have, unless you have questions of me before they come up.
Any questions for Mr. Howard?
I should know this maybe, but I'm just going to ask you because I don't. The status of the rest of that development, do we know where that is, or have we?
The "me" part of "we" doesn't, but the "they" part of "we" do, and they're going to tell you that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sweeney. Name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Chad Sweeney with Genovis, Ninemiscible Drive, Fishers, Indiana. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this evening. We started as a consultant to the Justice Companies on the project. In addition to Mr. Justice, we have Chris Miller and Brett Michaud with the company who are also here. First, I'd like to thank Mike and Judy and Sarah and Jeff and the whole Noblesville team and the committee members we had a chance to meet with on the project to date to get us to where we are this evening. So I'll let Walt walk through the site plan in more detail, but as Mike mentioned, this is a 90-acre site total. About 60 acres will be developed by the company through the multifamily and the senior living piece, with the outlots most likely being developed or sold for other commercial uses. The numbers that Mr. Howard mentioned regarding the payback period are tied solely to the multifamily portion. So, all the other development which would occur, hopefully be spurred and occur after that, would be in addition to the relatively short payback period of, well, we estimate it's two to three years on the assistance with the stormwater, which is very important to both maximize the site and get the project kicked off in what we hope is a very successful manner. So with that, I'll let Walt maybe talk a little bit about the company and the specifics of the site plan, and we're happy to answer any questions about that or about the development agreement or what the plans are. So, thank you again for the opportunity to be here this evening.
Thanks, Chad.
Good evening. I'm Walt Justice with the Justice Companies, 1398 North Shadland, Indianapolis, Indiana. So, first of all, before I forget, I wanted to thank everyone in advance, in case I do forget, the Subcommittee and everybody for coming up with this agreement and working with us on this to date. It really means a lot, you know, just listening to Lorna and everything that's going on in downtown Noblesville. And having done one community in Noblesville in years gone by, we did the Stony Ridge Community near 166 and Cumberland Road. We're excited to be back and part of the community and just for the long term, not just from this community, this development. So anyway, as we alluded, we had purchased this property, I believe it was three or four years ago, and again, post-recession, there wasn't really an opportunity to bring something to the table at that time. We have come up with a few different designs over that time period that, you know, we thought might be worthwhile to pursue. But again, just based on economics, the timing wasn't right until most recently. So, we have done some market research on the feasibility for the apartments. That seems to be most opportune at this time to move forward. We did purchase that property, or that 30 acres from the GLIC Company a couple of years ago, to make that part of our overall community. We, you know, again, when we look at an opportunity like this, it is more than just a short-term, you know, quick in-and-out. We're looking at something very special here for, based upon what we've done in the past and currently, to make this something special. So, we're coming up with, again, a multifamily community here that we hope will tie into everything there to the southeast, and then, you know, as it continues up to the south in this instance. We're very big on pedestrian-friendly. We're very big on marrying the community to services, whether it be, again, you know, restaurants, different types of shops that are very conducive to, you know, all living within one area. We are desirous of doing something with the senior living piece in due time. We don't believe that there is, you know, a market there for it currently. We believe that if we can get the multifamily component going, it's going to take us, you know, let's say, two to two and a half years to get it built and fully stabilized. During that interim, we believe then that we'll revisit the senior living area and come up with something at that time possibly to propose. We believe that, you know, getting the multifamily going to the back will create, you know, again, more demand on everything towards 32. So, anyway, we're very excited about this opportunity. Again, you know, we are very accustomed to working in partnership with, you know, in this case, the local municipalities. You know, anything that we've done where we have worked together, it's made it a better community in the long run, and that's what we look forward to. So, I'm open for any questions?
I'll just make a comment.
Yes, sir.
You talked about pedestrian-friendly. I've had, I've met with the neighborhood there just to the northeast, Promenade Woods, and they've talked about some connectivity along Mill Creek, and I'm not sure if you're the one to answer this or not, but we'd love to see some connectivity for them to this development. Can you speak at all to that, what your guys' plans are? I know, obviously, the development started in the northwest corner, so you probably wouldn't be touching the trail connectivity there along the eastern edge, but if you could kind of speak to that?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I don't recall if there was ever a prior commitment there or not, Mr. President, but that is something that we're desirous of doing. And again, it's got to be safe and navigable, so, you know, we want to do that in the course of development. So again, the topography that's there, whether it be to the west or east, can be done during the course of development. So as far as making a commitment to that, that's absolutely agreeable. So, yeah, we want that to be the case. And that's a beautiful community up there, by the way.
Yeah, like I said, they're kind of isolated there a little bit from that 32 corridor, and I know there's some folks that take their lives in their own hand there along Mill Creek and risk it and run south. And so I know there would be some nice, if there's a possibility for connectivity, and you obviously made a comment about walkability there, I think that would be important as well. So, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence as our city council without bringing that up. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Justice, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Just, is this drainage, I'm presuming it's just for the apartment, the 32 acres that we're talking about here? This isn't going to drain the other 29.3, is it? Or is it?
Actually, I believe it does capture some of that, though, but it regulates the drainage. I'm sorry, Chris, you might be able to help with that, but it does regulate the offside drainage as far as capturing everything to the southeast and then going often to the north.
So it's for the entire site? Or?
Just exclusively?
Just the apartments?
It's for the apartments, but it's gathering all the drainage from the north and around, capturing that, so it allows more available acreage.
To the south.
It's helping regulate it.
Got it. That was... When do you anticipate breaking ground?
We're expecting to get the full bid set done within the next two weeks, and then we'll have that out to bid, and that'll be about a 30-to-40-to-5-day process. But all end, we're hoping to break ground by year end. So, we're moving full speed ahead at this point.
I can make another comment. And this is more of a statement than a comment, but Mr. Howard, the multifamily zoning there has been in place for roughly about a decade? Am I correct? Okay. I know that several of us have heard somewhat of a pushback on multifamily within the community. I just wanted to point out that this was an existing zoning for this development, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Hampton?
I think just to follow up on what you just said, and Mr. Howard, this may be more for you, so the original zoning, the original plan 10 years ago was for multifamily? I know it was zoned that way, but that was also?
At this density.
Okay.
At this density or maybe even greater. So they need, they don't need any, they've been working with Sarah in planning, they don't need any additional rezones or PDs to accommodate this entire development, is my understanding.
That's true. Also, just to follow up, you did answer part of my question about the rest of the development. It sounds like the senior living would be perhaps Phase 2, and then the commercial would be Phase 3. Am I accurate in my assumption there?
Well, yeah, the multifamily would be Phase 1, and then the senior living, depending on what comes first, if we obviously are approached by somebody that's, you know, conducive to the community, then we would deal with them on the outlots or along the commercial sector.
One could happen before the other.
It could, it could. You know, we're, most of what we do is senior living in and around Indiana. And so, to say we're pretty dialed in, we're watching this very closely, and it is an evolving type of market. So, you know, again, the higher acuity that we do with the assisted memory care, things like that, may not be as much an option today as it would be two, three years from now, just based upon the competitiveness of the area. So we're, it's out in front of us constantly, but, you bet.
Questions? Mr. Air?
I have a question, maybe, from Mr. Howard. I appreciate you being here, Mr. Justice, and you did buy a challenging piece of property with the drainage constraint. One of the things we've noticed, and I've been probably as hard as anybody on assistance on the residential, but apartments do fall into a TIF area out there that is in the red and has been since day one. So, that will help us get back to a positive note. I don't think the senior living will, but naturally, all the commercial you could do down there would help. But with this, with this being in the middle, looking at roads and weeds for the last 10 years, I'm happy to see some positive development, and I understand your drainage challenge and need for the assistance.
Taylor, do you have one to talk first, or Mr. Taylor has a question? Mr. Taylor?
I want to echo what Mr. Air said, but I want clarification. Between the multifamily and the housing addition, the gray area there, black or gray, is that, is that a wetlands, or is that like a little tree separation?
There to the northeast?
Yeah.
That's where the property falls, you know, down into the ravine, and then it's a creek down there, and it comes back up towards the Beazer community.
It's a legal ditch, isn't it? A legal drain?
I think so.
I believe it is.
So will there be, and maybe there is there now, will there be a buffer between the houses and the multifamily?
Absolutely, yes. We, quite a bit, actually, quite a bit.
Very wooded there.
Yeah, it's very wooded, and there's a lot of fall back there, so...
Some of that wood stay?
Oh, all of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, right up to where we're building to that property line. What we'd like to do, speaking of trails, again, it's going to be dependent on it as we develop the site, whether we can accommodate those walking trails along the backside of the community, and again, make that one large.
No comments? Mr. Howard, do you want to speak?
I wanted to add that, from a TIF standpoint, the only part of this which would not generate TIF would be the senior living duplexes, but the senior living attached the multifamily and all the commercial. And as we have done in other areas, this was part of the original Hazel Dell TIF, which expires in 15 years, so we would anticipate during '19, going back to the '19 TIF area, starting a new TIF area with this development, so we capture that revenue for 25 years. The first purpose of the TIF would be to reimburse ourselves for the funding that is in this agreement. The second purpose would be to help on Hazel Dell, and that Hazel Dell TIF has been in the red for quite some time, and we assumed that was going to happen because we were building a road that we needed in Dillon Park, which we needed from that bond. But the second purpose would bring that in the black, and it is coming more in the black with some of the development that's occurring down at the south end. And then, thirdly, we would have then that revenue stream to identify whatever capital projects the engineering department felt were close by serving and benefiting, and I would be shocked if that wasn't Mill Creek. So, we have a long-term plan, and of course, the multifamily, that 2% kicks in right away and will help us.
Mr. Air?
Mr. Howard, on your Section 5, you talk about the repay the loan shall be treated in the same manner as property tax pursuant to Indiana Code, blah, blah, blah. And then, you also under 13, we are subordinating the lien to any lender, and not that anything would ever go bad, but any things did go bad. Would the collection be in front of the subordination?
No, our collection would be behind the mortgage holder, but there would be, we would be right in line with the equity partners, and I don't think these equity partners are going to go anywhere over $100,000. If it was a bigger deal, I mean, if it was a long-term, for example, in Borg, in Embassy, in those multimillion-dollar incentive packages, we stayed ahead of the lender.
I just didn't understand the, you know, because under the property tax code, we fall in front of the lender.
We've done those either way. Usually, the lien is stronger if we are incurring long-term debt in terms of bonds, et cetera. The way the statute's written, there's some ambiguity there, but it's a lot stronger when you are, when you're out there having long-term obligations, which we do on the projects, even Blue Sky. We have, we're ahead of the mortgage holder in those situations.
Thank you.
Additional questions for the presenter or Mr. Howard, or comments on it? Ms. Roland?
I remember the first time this came around, and it has been a long time. I wondered tonight if you brought us any examples of other projects, or give us some inspiration on how this is going to look. The financial I leave to Mr. Howard and more brilliant people than me, but I like to see the inspiration of what we can expect. So, did you bring anything tonight?
I can tell you some of the recent projects we've done within minutes from here, if you'd like, but I definitely can provide you some information after tonight, if you'd like, first thing tomorrow morning. So, we, as a company, we are not a, what we call a build-and-sell company or approach. We build and hold, and that's been our trademark for, you know, we're still owning and managing properties. My grandfather built 60 years ago around Indianapolis, and, you know, they're mostly masonry and so forth. But, so, just in the last three years, we completed the Woodlands Terrace Project at 136 and Meridian there in the northeast quadrant, and that's a senior living community. And then also, most recent, we did the Bridgewater Apartment Community there near 151st and Gray Road, and just finished the second phase of that. So it's a Class A approach, and again, it has a lot of similarity between what we're doing here. There's a lot of connectivity, you know, things that we're desirous of doing, being close to municipalities and so forth. But, you know, other than that, again, we've done a lot of work around Hamilton County through the years. We did a townhome community in the Village of West Clay. We've done a lot of housing and different things like that, so...
Exciting, and a nice addition to our community. I agree, looking at roads that go nowhere and terrible weeds and so forth, this will be fantastic. We appreciate you thinking about Noblesville.
Thank you.
Ms. Roland, I might add, I went to a high school reunion in the Woodlands last summer, and there were, and it was at the gathering room down in the basement, and there were a lot of people in that class that said, "We're old enough, we don't want to go to a high school class reunion in a senior citizen thing." And they were all thrilled. It was very, it wasn't quite Embassy Suites, but it was very, very nice. So you may want to visit there.
Thank you, I will. That's exciting.
Is that your 15th reunion from high school?
It's an anniversary of the 15th.
Additional questions for the presenter, Mr. Howard? Seeing none, we entertain a motion. Seeing none, we entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we approve the development of-
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Nine to zero. Thanks very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Moving right along, new ordinance for discussion. Counsel to consider ordinance 24-07-18, an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the promotional fund and establishing a public hearing. Motion to introduce? The motion in second to introduce Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Jeff Spalding, City Controller, Mr. President, members of the council. The item that you specifically referenced here is, you know, one of six that I have on the agenda this evening. But to kind of help frame this up and I think make the explanation of everything a little simpler, five of the six are all related to a single transaction. The only one that is different is the item listed down under transfers is transfer number one. That's a, that's a separate issue. And what the other five are essentially doing, and then I'll walk you through a little bit of the detail, they're essentially taking $83,885 that was included in the 2018 budget, but was accounted for in a way that, you know, we have since determined is probably not the best way to, to account for it, which was the promotion money that various departments have. And all of this is kind of part of the, the financial structuring, cleanup, modernization, professionalization we're doing. Not only was accounting for that and budgeting for it in an account line improper for, not improper, but suboptimal for several reasons, we did also discover through some other efforts that the clerk was undertaking, that within city code, there is actually, had been previously created sometime in the 80s, a promotional fund that is supposed to be used for that purpose. So it's city code section 30 dot oh seven. So not only am I addressing some of the accounting and budgetary issues that we had with the promotional funding, but I'm also making these changes to comply with, with city code and the establishment of that promotional fund. And interestingly, to do this, and the reason why, you know, I wanted to walk through and group all of these together for you and kind of explain the role of each of the items, is it ends up being a good sample case or test case of how municipal funding actually works, because you think, hey, this is pretty simple. We have, you know, $83,855 budgeted here, I just want to move it over and budget it someplace else. But what you have to do to accomplish that is fairly complex, and it kind of shows the structure of municipal finance in, in, I think, an important way. So in essence, what you've got with these, with these, with these three items, I mean, with these five items, the three ordinances and the two transfers down below, you're doing, we're doing a number of things. The first thing that we're doing with the two transfers, and I know we're not on that, but the two transfers are cash transfers, so the money was budgeted previously in the general fund and the parks fund. So we're taking cash from those two funds and moving that cash to this new established promotional fund. So that's one thing that you have to do, and it requires two separate resolutions to do that because you're dealing with two different funds. Then, once the money is in the promotional fund, once you've moved the cash over there, then you have to, it's the council's discretion to appropriate funds. So this first ordinance that we've listed, 2407-18, it's taking the cash that has been moved there and appropriating it to the promotional fund so the departments can expend it for the purposes, they have the authority now to expend the cash for the purposes that they had intended. And then the last part of it, the other two ordinances, are simply going through the exercise of deappropriating funds from, deappropriating amounts from the general fund and the parks fund, because first of all, we've moved cash out of those funds, and second of all, you don't want to have too, you know, double budgeted authority to spend these, to spend those funds. So all five of these things together, in essence, make this a super complicated, fiscally neutral transaction, but it does show you all the kind of complicated twists and turns and nuances that you have to go through to get there to do it the right way. And so hopefully, this will be illustrative for you, and if you have questions about any of those details you want to follow up later, I know it's kind of boring, but it's important in terms of why you'll see things in the future handled the way that I'm proposing to handle them is because I'm, you know, trying to follow that, that structure. So with that explanation, essentially, this first item that we were on is taking the, you know, the promotional fund that has been established and appropriating those dollars to the various departments within that fund. You'll see that on the, on the item. You can see a whole list of appropriations out of, out of the promotional fund. It's just basically appropriating to the departments the same amount that was included in the 2018 adopted budget for each of those departments. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions of Mr. Spalding?
Mm-hmm.
Seeing none, this is a, this is a ordinance that is, needs to establish a public hearing. Do I have a motion to do so? Yep, sorry.
I think we can make sure all three ordinances and then do one-
An established public hearing?
Yeah.
Cool. With that, we'll move right along then to new ordinance 25-07-18. Counsel to consider ordinance 25-07-18, an ordinance approving a reduction of appropriations in the general fund and establishing a public hearing. Motion to introduce?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Mr. Spalding?
And as I just described previously, the, the previous ordinance is appropriating Those monies are coming from a couple different funds, and so this appropriation reduction ordinance from the general fund shows you the places in the general fund budget that we're decreasing appropriations, and that total amount of appropriation decrease from the general fund is, if I can find it here quickly, $70,985. So of, of the money that was put in the promotional fund, $70,985 came from the general fund, so. And this ordinance just deappro, it, the cash transfer happened with the resolution, but this is eliminating the appropriation, and I can explain to you more why we have to do that later.
Questions for Mr. Spalding? Seeing none, we'll move on to new ordinance 26-07-18. Counsel to consider ordinance 26-07-18, an ordinance approving a reduction of appropriations in the Parks and Recreation Fund and establishing a public hearing. Motion to introduce?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Mr. Spalding?
And again, this ordinance, similar to the last, but affecting the Parks Fund, and the deappropriation amount is $12,900 in this case, as opposed to the other amount, hence your, your total again of $83,885.
Right. Additional questions, Mr. Spalding? Seeing none, to repeat also-
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd like to make a motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance 24-07-18, for ordinance 25-07-18, and ordinance 26-07-18. Madam Clerk, shall I, shall I read these, or is that sufficient? Twenty four-
Nope, she said no.
Nope, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Nine to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Spalding. They actually don't go anywhere. All right, moving on to transfers. Transfer number one, counsel to consider transfer in the police department budget. Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President, members of the council, this transfer ordinance is, again, the one item that is, that is different from the rest. Remember that old game when you were a kid, what thing does not go with the others? And this one is a separate issue that has been under conversation for some time, but it's with the, with regard to the matter of the police department expanding the school resource officer function within their operation, and this is addressing the budgetary needs for that expansion, the 2018 budgetary needs for that expansion. And I'm trying to find if I misplaced, oh, there it is. And what you will notice on this, probably the most significant aspect of this appropriation transfer is that it, you will notice there is no adjustment to the personal services budget. So basically, what's happening here is that we're taking funds that were already appropriated in the general fund contingency. I talked about that in the past, that, you know, in terms of trying to manage the budget well, we did budget some non-departmental contingency funds for issues that come up throughout the year. This issue came up during the year. Working with the, with the police department and Chief Jowett and Chief Arnold are here to answer specific questions about it, but working together with them, they identified what their budgetary needs would, would need to be to execute this in, in 2018. They figured out that through savings from existing vacant positions, that they would be able to fund the additional payroll costs within their existing budget, but for issues related to supplies, training, and some capital equipment for those additional officers, they were going to need to have a budget adjustment in 2018. So what you have before you is a appropriation transfer request to adjust their budget for the supplies, training, and equipment expenditures that, that they will need. And if you have any more questions about the specifics of the request, again, the folks from the police department are here and they can answer those questions.
Mr. Ayer?
I assumed you were passing this off to you?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Have we reached an agreement with school regarding the, with the Nobisfo schools?
Sure. The current arrangement right now for four officers, which is the amount we have on board as of this moment, the city pays for three and the schools is, are paying for one. Adding the eight additional officers, the schools are going to pay for 50% of the cost of eight. So essentially, they'll be reimbursing us for the cost of four officers. Now, the reimbursement agreement as exists now and the one we're proposing in the future, we've not modified the MOU yet, only covers personnel costs, so it's salaries, overtime, insurance, things of that nature. The police department has always furnished the equipment for these officers in toto, and that's basically what we're looking at with this transfer request, just so that we can provide the equipping of an individual officer times the eight officers that we'll need.
We equip them with vehicles along with all the other-
We do.
-essentials they need.
And this amount does not contemplate the need for any vehicles. Deputy Chief Arnold has done a very good job of holding back cars rather than trading them in, anticipating this. So we're, we're prepared to equip them with vehicles right now. We've got vehicles sitting there that can be utilized. These vehicles will be marked police cars. They will not have some of the equipment that cars assigned to the patrol division have. There's no need to put radar in them, for example. There's no need for in-car video systems. They're just not using it as a patrol vehicle the way the patrol fleet does. So we've got the vehicles right now. This is for uniforms, personal equipment, body armor, training, things of that nature.
Does this, does this amount of officers meet the needs that you, the department and the school system feels is going to be adequate into the next few years?
We do. Our goal for some time has been to have an officer in each building. There are 10 buildings, so, and this gives us 12 officers. Now, the 12 will include two sergeants. Each sergeant will be supervising five officers, and we'll probably have one doing the middle schools and the high school, and then one just doing the elementary schools. But this is going to allow for sick time, things like that, things that just inevitably will happen. We schedule school resource officers very differently than we schedule patrol officers or detectives. We require them not to take vacations during the school year, so that's not something we have to accommodate for. There's plenty of time during break times and during the summer for an officer to take vacation days and still, still get their days used. We also typically schedule training, either during break times or in the summertime, because our, our whole emphasis is to have them in the building while the kids are there. We think 12 will absolutely cover us.
Questions for Chief Jowett? Mr. Hampton?
Just, I want to say thank you, because as a member of the Public Safety Committee, just to make sure people know, you, you had been putting together a plan before May 25th.
Yes.
And, and because of that due diligence, because of the advanced work that you have done and your staff has done, all that work probably helped make this happen before they go back to school this year. Without that pre-planning, it would have been tougher to get all this together by August 1st. So just thank you. That's really awesome.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. O'Connor?
Just one. Chief, when do we anticipate having all the officers in the schools? Will you have them there day one of school this year, or are we looking down the road of, because of training, et cetera, hiring?
Great question. We're looking down the road. The eight that we hire will not end up in the schools. We'll be backfilling positions. We've actually had a gratifying amount of interest from patrol officers in moving two school resource officer positions. We will, currently have four assigned school resource officers that have been in place for some time now. We will have four more on day one of school, which is August 1st. We're doing that, one of those four will end up being a permanently assigned school resource sergeant. The other three, we have just grabbed from other divisions within the department. We've got to be very careful how we do this, because we can't deplete operational manpower from other areas. We can't deplete the number of people we have in patrol. We can't reduce the effectiveness of the investigations division. So we're, we're having to move chess pieces around to get this accomplished. But of the three, so there will be four additional officers on August 1st. Of the three that are temporaries, we currently have eight people in our training pipeline. Two are ready to be released very, very shortly, and then six more are probably still a month and a half away from completing the academy and then have to go through field training. But as those people are, are complete with training and entering the regular patrol force, we will then be able to move people around, replace the temps, if you will, and fill the additional open four positions. So to answer your question, we'll have eight of the 12, starting on August 1st. We anticipate, and this, this is a little bit fuzzy because of all the personnel shifting we have to do, but we would anticipate the additional four probably in February. It'll, it'll be late winter, maybe early spring of 2019.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, that helps.
No questions? I'll just echo what Mr. Hampton said and say thank you. I know you quickly worked with the schools to get this hammered out, and we, we said from day one, we were there to support them whatever way possible. So thank you for your efforts, and Captain Arnold as well, for getting this under control and moving forward, so.
We, we appreciate your support. We've got a great relationship with the schools, and, and that, that makes this much easier than it would be otherwise. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Additional comments, Mr. Spalding? Nope? Good? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would make a motion that we approve the transfer to the police department budget.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Nine to zero. Thank you very much, again, gentlemen. Moving on, transfer number two, counsel to consider interfund cash transfer from the general fund to the promotional fund. Mr. Spalding, welcome back.
All right. Thank you all. I'll, you know, cover these two together. Probably, well, first of all, as I mentioned earlier, it's moving cash from the general fund and the parks fund into the promotional fund. That's what these transfers are doing. But the important thing to understand is that not all transfers are the same, and understanding the distinction is important, and you'll see these kinds of cash transfers probably less frequently than other, other types of transfers. The transfer above was an appropriation transfer. And the distinction there is that in that case, you're transferring appropriation authority that you'd previously granted in the budget to another place within the budget, and those appropriation transfers have to stay within a fund. You can't transfer appropriation authority from one fund to another fund. We, again, if anybody wants to have the detailed discussion, but a council can appropriate monies from a fund, transfer those appropriate, that appropriation authority around within a fund, but they can't move it between funds. In that case, you do what you did before, which is, which was what we did before, where we increased the appropriation in one fund and decreased the appropriation in another fund. That's how you do it. You can't transfer appropriation authority. That said, these two items, two and three, they are cash transfers, and what that is, they're actually moving money in accounts and saying, I had, you know, I have some money in the general fund and I have some money in the parks fund that I want to move over to the, to the promotional fund, and that's what these two items do. Like I said, these are, these are less frequent items, there's, there are less cir- Like I said, these are, these are less frequent items, there's, there are less circumstances where you do cash transfers between funds, but in the case of setting up the new promotional fund, obviously, there's need to have cash to spend out of that fund, so that's the purpose of these, and I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, that there is a clear distinction between a cash transfer and appropriation transfer. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Spalding? Seeing none, can I entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I would move to approve transfer number two, counsel to consider interfund cash transfer from the general fund to the promotional fund as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor? Nine to zero, thank you very much. Moving right along to transfer number three, counsel to consider interfund cash transfer from the Parks and Recreation Fund to the promotional fund, Mr. Spalding? Any questions, Mr. Spalding? Seeing none?
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would make a motion that we approve the interfund cash transfer from the Parks
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Nine to zero, thank you very much. Council comments? Mr. O'Connor?
After hearing all those things from Mr. Spalding, I think I'd echo his comments, we are making great headway in actually making the process more transparent, it seems a little arduous, but great credit to him and his staff for making sure that we're doing these things appropriately, and you're never too old to learn, and I'm learning a few things myself as we go through this process, so thanks for all your help and effort.
Additional council comments? Ms. Wiles?
I would just like to echo that, the comments earlier about, that we appreciate all of the police departments doing, working in conjunction with the school corporation that school starts next month, I know there will be a lot of, Wednesday, August 1st, but there will be a lot of parents, it will be a little apprehensive, and I'm sure that seeing the additional resource officers there, the school corporation, that will help reassure them, so thank you very much.
Additional comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good evening.